The Muscatine City Council will come to order. And yes, we're pretty sure that there is someone left in the public safety building tonight to protect us.
Janitor.
Fran will begin this evening with a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Choddy.
Present.
Bynum.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred.
Present.
Six present and one absent, your honor.
Thank you, Fran. Folks, would you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have a real treat tonight. We have some official ceremonies squaring in of two firefighters and a police officer. So if firefighters Rob Claren and Williams Zemistill will join me at the podium, please. Okay, gentlemen, if you will repeat after me, and as we discussed in the hallway, the first part is going to be the tricky part, please raise your right hand. I, Rob Claren.
I, Rob Claren.
I, Williams Zemistill.
I, Williams Zemistill.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of firefighters.
Discharge all the duties of firefighters.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Now I need you to sign these documents here, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for our newest firefighter. Gentlemen, if you'll please allow council to welcome you on board. Run to the front of your coats.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Yep, thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Look forward to working with you.
And our newest member of the Muscatine Police Department, please welcome Jolisa Coleman. Jolisa, if you'll repeat after me, please. Yeah, raise your right hand. I have to be reminded of that concept. I, Jolisa Coleman.
I, Jolisa Coleman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter as required by law.
Okay. Officer, if you'd sign here, please. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our newest police officer.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This guy speeds.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah? Welcome aboard.
The other one does too, but he's gone. Protecting some boys and girls.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, also under Communications, Item C, which may not be on your agenda, but if there is anyone in council chambers this evening that wishes to address council regarding an issue that may not be included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. So noted. Okay, Item 5, Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes Items 6A and B, Items 8A through D, and by the way, I'm pulling Item 9A? Filing of Communications, Items 12A through E, and tonight's bills totaling $1,105,305.26, as well as journal entries for December 2012 through January 2013.
I made, I think I made a typo. That should be August 2012 through January.
August in place of December, right, Fran?
Right. It's August through December 2012 and January 2013.
Very good. Thank you. Again, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as noted?
Some move.
That would be Mark.
Second.
Second. Scott, any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Those opposed, nay? Very good. And moving down to Item 7.
Your honor, if I could interrupt. You pulled Item 9A from the agenda. Typically, we'd take that in order on the agenda. You may want to do that before we get into the public hearing and the PowerPoint presentation. Up to you, though.
We can, you can take it out of order. Okay. We'll do that. We're moving forward for just a moment to Item 9 from the mayor, and it's a proclamation, and we have a young lady that would like to speak to us tonight. Come to the podium, tell us your name, please.
I don't see anything on here. Hi, my name is Anne Boy Masing Garv. I'm the newly crowned Miss Muscatine's outstanding teen. My platform is the magic of music, and I'm also a student ambassador for VH1 Save the Music Program, which puts music in schools as well as instruments for the less fortunate. I am really am blessed to be a part of the high school's show choir, women's corral, as well as the upcoming musical. But as you know, not a lot of people around the United States are as fortunate as us in Muscatine. We all know that music helps develop language and reasoning portions of the brain. But if you think about it, music does so much more for us. Music helps develop teamwork skills. If you think about it, orchestra can't function without all of the members in the orchestra. Music fosters good study habits. Few of us can perform or play a piece without much practice. Studies have shown that music can improve standardized test scores, not just basic standardized tests such as ITBS, but also as ACTs and SATs. And finally, it is the one subject that teaches math, literacy, foreign language, and culture. I'm here tonight to ask you as council to support March, sorry, as music in our schools month with an official city proclamation. I've spoken with local media representatives, sorry, regarding our related essay contest. I would also like to dedicate my spring break to creative music play in daycare settings. Please consider this proclamation as an opportunity to show support for Muscatine's youth and future. Thank you.
I think the procedure at this point will be, if I may, read the proclamation and then the council will vote on it. Okay?
Ask questions.
Proclamation reads, "Music in Education Month, whereas music helps you multitask by using multiple regions of the brain at once, and whereas music benefits language development, which is especially important for children ages 2 through 9, and whereas a 2004 study conducted at the University of Toronto showed that six-year-old piano and voice students scored three points higher on IQ tests than those who did not, and whereas music research has shown a direct link between music education and spatial skills such as math, engineering, art, et cetera. Now, therefore, I, Dwayne Hopkins, Mayor of the city of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 2013 as Music in Education Month and ask that all citizens take steps to become involved in this nationally recognized event." Is there a motion to approve their proclamation?
Some move.
As read.
Some move.
Motion by Osama.
Second.
And a second by Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Very well, motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to have the proclamation?
I was also.
Your last name Mansager?
Masing Garv.
Oh, Masing Garv. I didn't think you might be related to Mrs. Mansager, but not Mr. Mansager. I can tell you that much.
Ouch. There you are.
Thank you.
And thank you for your platform.
Young lady, what was your, could I have the spelling of your name, please?
First name Anna, Anna. Last name Masing Garv.
Okay, thank you.
And before we move forward, I would like to recognize, for those of you that are down on this floor, probably didn't notice that there's a large number of Boy Scouts joining us tonight up in the balcony. Welcome, everyone. If someone wanted to introduce your troop number?
Boy Scout Troop 167.
Boy Scout Troop Number 167, welcome to council chambers. Okay, moving backwards to Item Number 7, Public Hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed adoption of the budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. The amounts included in the public hearing notice and budget adoption resolution reflect the budget amounts approved by the city council during their budget review sessions and are in the format required by the state of Iowa. The final budget document must be filed with the state on or before March 15th each year. Prior to any action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Motion to close?
Move to close.
That would be Scott. And a second?
Second.
A second, Tom. And for discussion, as I understand it, our finance director, city's finance director, Nancy Leek, has a presentation.
Works for me.
I was gonna run the slides, and the city administrator was actually gonna give the presentation.
Good try. Appreciate it. Good try.
Yeah, we flipped a coin earlier, so.
Great. Almost, there we go. I'm not gonna read everything that's on the slides here tonight. You've got a copy of that, but I'm gonna try and hit the highlights, starting on the second page of the handout. The proposed 2013-2014 budget does include the following items: 48,588,000 in operating capital expenditures, just over 45 million in revenues, a little over 2.3 million in general obligation bonds, including 300,000 in TIF funds, a little over 12.5 million dollars in general property taxes excluding TIF taxes, and a tax, city tax rate per $1,000 valuation of $15.67. The next three pages provides a good breakout of the budget. You know, where does the money come from? Is this first item, all city funds, revenue sources? It breaks out all the different types of revenues that the city has, that is disposal property taxes, TIF revenues, other city taxes as hotel motel, cable, utility franchise fees, licenses, permits, other revenues. Breaks each of those out into a nice pie chart for your information, as well as the next two items as well. The next page has a breakdown of city expenditures by function, public safety, public works, community development. Gives you an idea of what percentage of the budget overall those functions incorporate. The next item is the city tax levy rates by type. Give you an idea of what chunk of the pie each of those levies accounts for. General fund, obviously at the max at $8.10. Transit levy, transit system at just over 47 cents. Special revenue, tort liability levy improvements in debt service at $2.89. Next page gives you good history, ten-year tax rate history in the city of Muscatine. You'll note that the levy from last year to this year remains the same. And then skipping to the next page, the proposed property tax rate. The city tax rate, again, as proposed, remain the same as the current year at $15.67 per $1,000 of taxable valuation. City is able to maintain the tax rate at this level even with increases in personnel costs, police and fire pension contributions, other employee benefits costs, insurance, and transit operation, operating costs. Maintaining the same tax rate for 2013-2014 was possible due to, one, not funding all general fund employee benefits from the employee benefits levy, $530,246 of that amount was funded from the general fund balance; two, using $40,000 from the insurance trust to fund a portion of the increase in insurance cost. We should note, however, that using $530,000 of general fund balance for employee benefits, with approximately 50% of this amount for the increase in police and fire pensions, about $235,000, is not sustainable in future years. We're gonna be talking about that a little bit later on tonight's agenda regarding the municipal fire and police retirement system of Iowa. The insurance trust fund and the general fund balance would not have been available. The tax levy rate would have been $16.28 per $1,000 or 61 cents higher than the proposed tax rate actually is. Proposed tax rate reflects increases and decreases in the following individual levies. General fund is at the max $8.10. Transit levy has an increase of 16.2%. Tort liability, an increase of 3.3%. Employee benefits has a reduction of 1.7%. Debt service, down 4%. And the levy remains the same for a total of $15.67. Again, there's no emergency levy. That was eliminated in the 2012, excuse me, 2011-2012 budget. That remains the case for next fiscal year. Debt service, excuse me, the debt service levy did, was able to decrease primarily due to favorable interest rates. With the city's proposed tax rate of $15.67, an average homeowner would see about a $33 increase over the current year, again, due to the change in the rollback. Average, this is an average amount. Individual values do fluctuate from home to home. This reflects only the city's portion in the overall tax rate. This does not include the combined tax rate, the county or the school district levies. Next rate does give you an idea of what the combined tax rate is and where your taxes go within the county of Muscatine. 39% city, 38.2% Muscatine schools, and Muscatine County at 22.8%. And again, the above tax levy rates reflect fiscal year 2012-2013 rates and the city's proposed tax levy rate for 2013-2014. The budget does project a general fund any balance for June 30th of 2014 at 15% or just over $2.6 million of general fund expenditures. This more than meets the minimum 10% required by the city's current financial policy as well as the proposed new minimum target level of 15%. Continues to address the comments from prior years, Moody's Bond Rating Review, which noted that the city's 10% minimum fund balance is lower than most AA2 rated communities, which average fund balances in excess of 20%. With this budget, we are positioning ourselves well for future years, and I'll review that here in a moment with a later slide. Continuing general fund highlights, we do want to reiterate that the general fund revenues and other financing sources are $283,000 less than expenditures and other financing uses, which means that the portion of the general fund balance is being used to balance the overall general fund budget. The general fund budget does include a reduction, a slight reduction in full-time equivalents of, from 154.4 to 154.59, reflecting a decrease in library staffing from this last year. Budget does maintain most, does maintain subsidies to outside agencies at their current funding levels, with the exception to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which was increased from 55% to 25% of the hotel motel tax, estimated at $87,500, as discussed last year with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and proposed in this year's budget. The 2012-13 general fund budget did include assigned funding in the present year for purchases of, excuse me, for allocations, $40,000 set aside for the city's obligation for its new cops grant funded police officers, $250,000 towards a new fire engine, $140,000 for the purchase of new financial software. And again, based on earlier discussion, the council did choose to, in a favorable fund balance, the city council did authorize funding the full amount of the fire engine There's only one funding assignment in the 2013-2014 budget, and that continues the $40,000 allocation for the set aside for the city's obligation to fund the fourth year cost for the two officers funded through the cops grant. The general fund highlights being continued on the next page. Proposed 2013-14 budget does include several significant capital outlay allocations, $95,000 to replace and enhance police department squad car video system, $30,000 for backstop fencing improvements at Kent Stein, $23,000 to paint and repair for tennis courts, $25,000 to repaint the Aquatic Center pool basin, and a total of $102,500 to replace general fund vehicles and equipment. City has started down a path to incorporate lean tools and processes in our municipal culture. 2013-14 budget continues to reflect that and the numerous efficiencies that we've identified over the past several years. Our enterprise funds. For the city's enterprise funds, rate increases are budgeted for sewer, collection, and drainage and parking. The budget has an estimated 2% increase in sewer, in collection and drainage revenues. Next week, you'll see a recommendation from staff to proceed with the formal rate study. In addition to that, the budget includes increases in parking meter rates from 20 cents to 25 cents an hour for 10-hour meters, and from 30 cents to 50 cents for 2-hour meters. Fees are not budgeted to increase in other funds, including transfer station, landfill, refuse, golf course, transit, ambulance, airport, and parking. The budget does continue to reflect the plan to substantially reduce and eliminate the accumulated deficit in the landfill fund over the next three to four years. Quick capital project summary on the next page. The budget does include just over $9.8 million in capital projects, $4.6 million, a little over $4.6 million in street-related projects, a little over $2.9 million in sewer-related projects, $600,000 for lab expansion, lab expansion projects of the water pollution control plant, $506,000 for the Musser to Wiggins Road Trail, $557,900 for airport improvements, $275,000 for Weed Park maintenance building project, and $224,500 in other Last page of the PowerPoint. Proposed budget does position the city for future years' budgets, including the possible impacts that legislative changes currently being discussed may have on the city's ability to continue to fund the current level of city services. This improved position includes general fund balance of 15% of general fund expenditures, which addresses the bond rating issues, and provides a balance which will assist the city in the event of emergencies or future funding shortfalls, allows for funding of department capital expenditures from available balances in lieu of bond issues, which results in a savings of interest costs, and maintains a steady tax levy rate, avoiding significant year-to-year decreases or increases in the rate. And I don't know if you noticed, but yesterday I was contacted by Representative Lockren, and the ATE legislation was or did not come out of the first funnel. So good news on that aspect as well. That's all I had tonight. Nancy, is there anything you'd like to add or point out in particular?
No, I think it's a good budget and was a good budget process this year.
Absolutely. I appreciate staff's time, especially Nancy's time, as well as council in helping us to finalize the budget over the past month. Appreciate everybody's time and effort this past, how many months? Well, since November, so.
Okay, council, we have a motion on the floor and a second and some discussion. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Scott, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. Again, this is a motion and a second on the proposed adoption of the budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year 2013-2014. All those in favor say aye.
Your honor, we're still in the public hearing portion.
Oh. Supposed public hearing.
Seven, eight.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, okay. Oh, and we have a motion and a second, so. Fran, you have a voice vote here.
This is a voice vote.
Now is the time for public comment.
And we've already done that.
Right.
Right.
So they got a motion and a second to close the public hearing is what that was.
Okay. Now is the time for the public to comment. Motion to close.
So moved.
Tom, second.
The motion was already made to close.
That's fine. Just use that.
We're a little bit out of whack. Can we reel this back in?
So what do you need?
There was already a motion to close.
Scott moved to close. Seconded by Phil.
We had the discussion.
Seconded by Tom, actually.
Just to vote. That was the second time around.
That was the second time around. Before you had Nancy's discussion and Greg's discussion, Scott and Phil motion to close the public hearing, then we had the discussion. All you need to do now is vote to close the public hearing.
Oh, I thought I started off by doing that. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Did we disagree with that?
We already have that.
A voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And again, I thought I'd done that already. So motion carries 6-0.
Good enough.
Okay, Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed amendment number one to the fiscal year 2012-2013 city budget. This amendment includes amending both revenues and expenditures to the currently estimated amounts. Amendments include updated revenue estimates, updated capital the public hearing, then we had the discussion. All you need to do now is close, vote to close the public hearing.
Oh, I thought I started off by doing that. Okay, is there a motion to close public hearing? Did we just do that?
We already have that.
A voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And again, I thought I'd done that already, so motion carries six zero. Okay, item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed amendment number one to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 city budget. This amendment includes amending both revenues and expenditures to the currently estimated amounts. Amendments include updated revenue estimates, updated capital project construction schedules, additional grant-funded projects and other increased operating and capital outlay costs. Prior to any action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
Motion by Osama, second by Jeanette.
It's Tom.
Tom.
It was?
He doesn't have enough here, yeah.
Okay, thanks for your help Osama.
Yeah.
All those in, this is a voice vote, any discussion? The voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns a proposed concession agreement with Happy Joe's Pizza. The city and Happy Joe's Pizza of Muscatine are mutually interested in a two-year agreement for concession operations. Prior to any action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to close.
That was Tom.
That was Tom.
Second.
And a second was Jeanette. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Down to item 11 from the city administrator. Resolution adopting the budget and certification for the fiscal year 2013, 2014 city budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the budget and certification for the fiscal year 2013 and 2014 city budget?
So moved, your honor.
That's Scott.
Sec.
Second Osama. Any discussion, council? This is a roll call vote beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item B, which is a resolution approving amendment one to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 city budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving amendment one to the fiscal year 2012, 2013 city budget?
So moved.
And that was Jeanette.
Second.
Second, Osama. Any discussion, council? Roll call vote beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item C, request to approve concession agreement with Happy Joe's Pizza. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That was Mark.
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item D, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the quarterly assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, city staff provides to city council a request for the assessment of nuisance abatement costs against private property owners. At this time, staff is forwarding the assessment list for unpaid abatement costs totaling thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Mark? Second, anyone?
Second.
Tom? Any discussion, council? It's a roll call vote beginning with Mark.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And we begin with you, didn't we, Mark, I think? Yes, motion carries six zero. Item E, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution requesting legislative action to address the municipal fire and police retirement system of Iowa dilemma. The cost and funding structure of public employee pension benefits are estimated in the Iowa state, are established in the Iowa state code. The city desires to fairly compensate all employees in their retirement. The current structure of public employee pension funding is unsustainable in the near future and in the long term and is becoming an increasing burden to the taxpayer. The purpose of tonight's action is to implore our state legislators to take up the matter of pension reform to assure that a fair and equitable benefit is provided to municipal employees in a sustainable manner. The political leaders in Des Moines are being encouraged to take up the matter of pension funding reform before the matter becomes critical. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That's Tom.
Second, your honor.
Second Osama. Any discussion, council?
I think, I'd just like to clarify that this, this proposed resolution here is not laying blame at anyone's feet. It's just asking for help solving the problem.
And one, one other clarification, there's two resolutions in the packet. I'm, my, my assumption is that it's the, the.
It's the second one, that in, the last paragraph, I'll read it out loud, says, be it further resolved that the city council supports Senate Study Bill 1121, which provides for a state appropriation towards the retirement system of three point seven nine percent, goes on from there. And I just received an email from Jerry Ubers indicating that that passed out of committee just as we were starting our meeting. So, progress is moving forward, but I think we want to support that effort anyway.
Any other discussion, council? It's a roll call vote beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item F, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution adopting the revised articles of agreement for the by-state regional commission. At its January twenty-third, 2013 meeting, the by-state regional commission unanimously recommended revisions to the articles of agreement that create the commission. The revisions were necessitated by the desire to match the timing of municipal elections for smaller member government representatives and to update warrant approval language as it is stated in the bylaws. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette? And a second?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion, council? Also roll call beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item G, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting the annual public hearing for public comment on the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency Plan. Section 2702 of the Housing and Economic Recovery Action of 2008 requires that a public hearing be conducted annually to discuss any changes to the goals, objectives and policies of the agency. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, May 2nd, 2013 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
I'll give that to Osama and a second to Scott. Any discussion, council? It's a roll call beginning with Osama.
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item H, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution declaring necessity and providing for notice of hearing on a proposed urban revitalization plan. Following a presentation to city council in September 2012, staff was authorized to begin developing a program to address and stimulate new and expanded, expanding residential development in designated areas, promote infill opportunities and encourage historic preservation. The first step under chapter 404 of the Code of Iowa is set a public hearing on the matter. This hearing will take place on Thursday, April 11th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Tom, in a second?
So moved.
Mark? Discussion, council?
Your honor, I do have property in this area. I do intend to vote yes, though.
Okay.
I just wanted you to be aware of that.
All right. Very good. Any other discussion? It's a roll call vote beginning with Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Item I, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the purchase of a dump truck chassis for Public Works. Five bids were received with a recommended low bid from Peterbilt of Council Bluffs in the amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars for a gross vehicle weight truck chassis. There is seventy-three thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Mark?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item J, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the purchase of equipment for a new truck chassis. Five bids were received for a dump body, salt spreader, snow plow and underbody scraper with a low bid from Henderson Manufacturing in the amount of sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars. There is seventy-four thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Jeanette.
Second, your honor.
Second Osama. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item K, presented for city council's consideration is a request to authorize the 2013, 2014 rolled salt, road salt purchase agreement between the city of Muscatine and the city of Davenport. Annually, the city of Davenport acts as the lead agency for the purchase of road rock salt for communities in the Quad City area. In order to move forward in purchasing the road rock salt, the city of Davenport is requesting that all members of the consortium secure the approval of their respective legislative bodies. The agreement stipulates that fifty percent of the order be paid between July 1st, 2013 and July 10th, 2013. Once the salt is delivered, the respective communities will be involved for the balance or will be invoiced for the balance, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Scott. Second?
Second.
Second Osama. Discussion?
Just to refresh my memory, how much salt are we ordering? Are we doing one barge? Are we, are we splitting it with the county? Two barge loads?
The order is for two barge loads, three thousand tons. We'll split that with the county. We budgeted for one barge load for the city, so.
Thank you.
Other discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item L, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change order number one for the Mad Creek sanitary sewer extension project. The new contract items are necessary to effectively quantify work for stream bank protection and stream crossings. This change order will result in a deduction of twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, bringing the contract total for the project to nine hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom?
Second.
Second, can I hear Jeanette? Discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Item M, presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Water Pollution Control Plant to approve a professional services agreement for the Phase One feasibility study of design and engineering for the lab expansion project. An engineering study conducted in 2012 projected costs to expand the current lab in the existing building exceeded, exceeded the cost of the new structure. The Water Pollution Control Plant staff feels that a better value is possible. After discussing the matter with Stanley Consultants, the firm has proposed a feasibility study at a cost of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to, one, determine if the project can proceed within budget constraints; two, to work with the Water Pollution Control Plant on a basis of design to maximize efficiency and functional use; three, to develop a report of critical features and elements with optional features that can be self-performed by the Water Pollution Control Plant staff; and four, to prepare a construction cost estimate based on the basis of design report. It is staff's recommendation Phase One of the Stanley Consultant Professional Services Agreement be approved in order to move the lab expansion project forward. The money for the feasibility study has been budgeted. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark? In a second? Second, Tom? Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries six zero. Item 14, it is now time for communications from council members, beginning with Councilman Lorette.
Thank you, mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Phil?
I have nothing at this time, your honor.
Scott?
Mayor, just to repeat what Greg said, to thank the staff and the operating departments for their input in the budget, because input really comes from a lot of people across the city, so, that's all.
Very good. Osama?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Jeanette?
I just enjoyed seeing all those scouts up there in the balcony. Other than that, nothing.
Okay. Tom?
Just, I'd like some clarification or understanding now that we've approved the resolution relevant to the pension system. Want to make sure that it gets forward to our legislators and the governor and make sure that everybody that hears about this should hear about it.
We would definitely forward it. I talked to Representative Lockren earlier this afternoon and mentioned this and indicated I'd forward it as soon as council passed it.
Great. Thank you.
And Greg?
One, or two, maybe two items, your honor. Just going to get ahead of the schedule. We have a city council meeting scheduled for July 4th, and my assumption is council would rather not be here on July 4th. We have two options. We can either meet earlier in the week, Wednesday, or we can simply cancel the July 4th meeting and if something comes up that needs to be addressed at that time, we can either take action at the in-depth session or if we need to call a special meeting, we can do so. My assumption would, my preference would be just to cancel the meeting if we have an issue that needs to be addressed, we can deal with that at that point in time.